Uh, it's seven o'clock, uh, May the eighteenth, uh, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, and I called the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting to order. Uh, so, uh, let's start with a roll call, please.
Uh, Commissioner Stanek?
Here.
Commissioner Kumara Pan?
Yeah.
And Chair Shu?
Uh, here.
And, um, as of right now, uh, Commissioners Smami and Vice-Chef of War are absent.
And, um, Commissioner, uh, Chair Bigor will join us several minutes later.
Yes.
So, we can start now. So, uh, at the first of the meeting, um, we welcome, uh, community members, uh, who want to talk about, um, uh, anything that's not on our, uh, agenda of this meeting. Um, and if you have anything to say, yeah, please raise your hand. And we will unmute you. Okay, I see Lisa Warren want to talk. You have three minutes. Okay.
Hi, good evening. Um, so a couple of things I wanted to say, unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to stay for the whole meeting. I have another meeting. I really am interested in, in your agenda item. But first, I want to thank Parks and Rec Department and any of you who may have had some influence on it for allowing Zoom meetings to continue as far as classes for, um, fitness. Because it's been really great for a lot of us to be able to do that. Um, and not have to come into the building or have the classes canceled altogether. So if we can keep that forever, it'd be awesome. So thank you for that. If you had any input, I know it was not a quick decision that was made. So there must have been some back and forth that went on, and I'm, I'm glad where it landed. And secondly, I wanted to request that you consider having some, um, discussion at some point soon about the naming of what is now referred to as Lawrence Midi Park. Midi is a street in San Jose. Lawrence Expressway is just that, an expressway. And it's the, it's a county road. It's not in any city, goes through cities, but it's on our border, but it is not even our road. So it makes little to no sense to me because it's not a very attractive name, Lawrence Midi Park. Um, and it doesn't even make sense. It sounds like you're in the middle of this awful intersection, which you're just at the end of this awful intersection. So I've had some discussions with people who say, oh, yeah, yeah, shouldn't say that. And there's been some brainstorming and some ideas, and I don't need to tell you those now. Um, but if you could please assist with getting the name to be a more appropriate name for the location and the city in general, and that's it. The number, I'll tell you right now, the number one pick out of the brainstorm, brainstorming, and this is like a dozen people, so clearly there needs to be more input. But the number one pick at the moment is, and it's not unanimous, um, is North Rancho Park. Because the trail will connect what is now referred to as Lawrence Midi with Rancho Rincana Park and Pool, which is on the south end of Rancho. So it was thought that gives a direction of where it is. And it doesn't sound cumbersome like some other things that came up. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you for your nice input. Uh, and I think there is an active survey on Lawrence Midi Park on our city website. Uh, if you have this suggestion, maybe you can, um, put it in your feedback. So city staff can collect that information and you can encourage your friends to do that. Thank you. Uh, so if there's no other people, um, want to talk about non-agenda item, uh, let's go to, uh, our, yeah, item one in agenda. Update on fiscal year two thousand twenty-one to twenty-two, city work program item. Blackberry Farm Golf Course Assessment.
Uh, thank you, Chair Shu and Commissioners. Tonight we'll be receiving a presentation on the Blackberry Farm Golf Course Future Use Options. So I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Camilli, Project Manager with the Public Works, Works Department for the presentation.
Great, thank you, Molly. Y'all, can y'all hear me out there? Great.
Uh, yes.
All right, let me, uh, let me share my screen here, make sure I've got things set up properly. And here. All right, can you all see that cover sheet of the presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure. I thought maybe I lost you for a minute, so. Um, so, good evening, Commissioners. As Molly said, my name is Lisa Camilli. I'm a project manager in the capital improvement program for the city. Uh, tonight we'll be discussing the two feasibility studies conducted, and conducted for the future use of the Blackberry Farm Golf Course. Um, we'll also be soliciting your feedback on the next steps of this project. I'd like to give you an overview of the presentation, and I'll apologize now for the robust, uh, agenda on the, on the presentation. Uh, it's a little bit long-winded, but we'll get through it. Um, first I'll be providing some, some background on the site and its operation. Uh, then I'll discuss current issues at the golf course that are compelling the city to look more closely at the, how the site is used. Next, I'll discuss what actions the city has taken to address these issues and how the project fits into the context of the two thousand twenty park system master plan. Then I'll walk you through some of the detail of each option. Uh, option A includes minor repairs and improvements to the existing golf course. And option B converts the golf course to natural habitat. After I present some detail on these options, we'll look at a comparative cost between the options. And finally, we'll look to solicit your input on the next steps, including the public outreach process. I'm going to turn my laser on here for a minute. So this is a site map of the golf course and surrounding areas. In this view, north is to the right, the far right of the screen. And Stevens Creek Boulevard is the, is the very far right. Um, Stevens Creek is the blue meandering line above the golf course. And, uh, BlackBerry, BlackBerry Pool and associated parking lot are located to the south of the parking, uh, of the golf course. Um, the golf course itself is within the yellow boundary. Uh, the entire site is approximately sixteen acres in size. And about twelve point five of those acres require irrigation. Uh, to the north is the existing golf course parking lot. Uh, which is adjacent to the, uh, main building, which houses the Pro Shop, the Blue Pheasant Restaurant, and, and the restrooms. Hole number one is immediately adjacent to the main building located here. And the course meanders through the site in a few different directions. And hole number nine, uh, begins about this location. And the green for hole number nine is immediately adjacent to the existing golf, uh, parking lot. Um, you can see here, this brown area, that is the site of what, uh, historically has been, uh, a pond used for the golf course, mostly decorative pond predominantly. It was not particularly used for irrigation purposes. Whoops. The course was built in nineteen sixty-two, and the city took on ownership and operation in nineteen ninety-one. Um, historically, the course was irrigated using well water, uh, with use of a storage tank. But in two thousand and three, uh, the storage tank failed, and the irrigation system was converted to using municipal water, um, San Jose water. Uh, currently, the city uses only municipal water for irrigation. And the average annual cost for water is currently about sixty-three thousand dollars. So it's a considerable operational cost. The golf course is immediately adjacent to Stevens Creek. Uh, the Stevens Creek Corridor is home to protected wildlife and special status plants. Uh, the golf course is also within a designated flood plain. Uh, the last known flooding on the site, uh, was within the last ten years, although there have been some adjustments to the creek that may prevent future flooding. Uh, the historic ponds do not retain water, and it's likely they never actually did. Uh, in terms of use of the course, uh, prior to COVID, the course was seeing about twenty-eight thousand rounds of golf annually. And the current, the annual average subsidy to the golf has been about two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. There are two primary issues that raise concerns about the condition of the golf course. The irrigation system is over sixty years old. Um, there are frequent failures of the main and lateral lines. Uh, this can be very costly and waste valuable water. The system has long passed its useful life and is very inefficient by today's standards. Additionally, drought-related water restrictions will likely impact the use of the system in the future. Uh, and to add to that, the long-term future cost of water is, is relatively unpredictable. Additional concern on the site is safety. Um, these safety concern issues relate to the accessibility as well as errant balls on the golf, on the golf course. Over the past decade, the city has taken several steps to address the issues with the golf course. Starting in two thousand eleven, the city hired Russell D. Mitchell and Associates to design a new irrigation system. Unfortunately, that project was not implemented. And then in two thousand and twelve, the city initiated an investigation to renovate the existing well for irrigation. Findings from this study indicated that the well may have limited use due to its potential influence on the flows within Stevens Creek. In two thousand fourteen, the city focused efforts on completing the Stevens, Stevens Creek Corridor Master Plan until two thousand sixteen, when the planning, uh, process was put on hold to focus on efforts for the citywide master plan. In parallel to the Stevens Creek Corridor Master Plan, the city hired the National Gulf Foundation, uh, to look at options for renovation of the golf course. At that time, the focus was on completing needed repairs to the course as well as looking into ways the course could become financially self-sufficient. No options were implemented. And then that study was put on hold. And then from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty, the city focused on completion of the park system master plan. The master plan is currently being used to guide decisions about park use and programming throughout the city. On July twentieth, two thousand twenty-one, uh, City Council, at a City Council meeting, staff was direct, directed to look into two alternative uses of the site. This action initiated the two studies that you're discussing this evening. Option A provides minor repairs and improvements to the golf course. Option B discontinues use of the site as a golf course and converts it to natural habitat. The park system master plan, uh, was adopted in two thousand twenty. As a guiding document for citywide park planning, we are compelled to ask how this project fits within the context of the master plan. The master plan advises that, uh, before doing like-for-like replacement of an amenity, amenity, we evaluate the benefits. Also, that we review current needs prior to replacing failing amenities. I will also point out that the master plan specifically articulates the goal of increasing ecological value along Stevens Creek Corridor. In two thousand seventeen, as part of the public outreach process for the master plan, the, the city conducted a citywide survey. Uh, there were nine hundred and thirty-nine respondents. Based on survey results, nearly seventeen percent of respondents participate in golf. Sixty-seven percent stated that they walk for pleasure or fitness in nature. Eighty-three percent noted that improving access to natural open space is important. Eighty percent favored, uh, trails and pathways to the, uh, they favored adding trails and pathways to the existing inventory. And seventy-four percent stated that having a variety of recreational opportunities is important. Now we'll look a little more closely at what is being proposed within each option. Option A includes minor repairs and improvements to the existing golf course. This study was completed by NGF. This study contains four primary elements. These include the replacement of tees, greens, and the empty ponds. It addresses the primary golf course safety issues. It looks at replacement of the irrigation system, and it assesses the feasibility of restoring the existing well for irrigation. By replacing tees and greens, the intention is to improve playability and drainage. It may also provide an opportunity to marginally expand the footprint of some tees and greens that are undersized, given the amount of use the course sees. To reduce initial costs, the tees and greens can be selectively replaced. Uh, but the industry standard is to replace them every six to ten years. So reconstructing tees and greens during renovation and installation of the irrigation system is the best use of downtime for the course. Additionally, the empty ponds would be planted with native lowland species and remain empty. The primary safety issues for the course include the need to shorten hole number nine because errant balls currently go into the parking lot and can be a dangerous, uh, can be dangerous for unsuspecting patrons. Also, there are localized locations on the course that can be leveled to help with accessibility and prevent people from slipping on steep, steeper slopes. Uh, additionally, netting between hole number four and number six is needed to prevent errant balls from hole number four hitting a person teeing off on hole number six. The next important item in this study is the replacement of the irrigation system. This would include replacement of all elements of the system up to the existing water meter. The goals are to make the irrigation system much more efficient and effective. Uh, this will help reduce costs as well as future use restrictions. Also, replacing the system will limit the potential for catastrophic break of the existing main line. Now I'd like to look at the historical use of water for the site. The table here indicates water use from two thousand and eight to two thousand and thirteen, and then from two thousand and fourteen through two thousand and twenty. As you can see, there is a considerable reduction in water use after two thousand and fourteen. On average, after two thousand and fourteen, the city used only fifty-three percent of the water used prior to two thousand and fourteen. Given the, given the condition of the existing irrigation system, this is an incredible reduction in use. Uh, there are a few things in two thousand, uh, fourteen that propelled the reduction of water use. First, there were county-wide water use restrictions, which were implemented. And the city, uh, requested that the, the company maintaining the site, uh, implement water restrictions also for the golf course. Uh, the city installed, uh, higher efficiency control system for the irrigation heads at that time. And, uh, there was also a considerable reduction in the total acreage being irrigated. Unfortunately, we do not have specific information on the operational reduction, so we can't tell you how many, uh, acres have been irrigated over the past five or six years. Um, it has been considerably, it's, it's fluctuated considerably based on conditions. Um, but we do know that periodically nearly one-third of the sprinkler heads have been turned off. Uh, this tends to leave large areas of, uh, of the course brown during the summer season. Now with a new irrigation system, NGF is projecting water use as indicated in this table. If you focus, uh, on the area circled in red, you can see how a new system can help reduce water use while still providing excellent efficiency and effectiveness. On the far left is the total acres being irrigated. We can irrigate more area with less water for better turf quality, or we can target areas to limit irrigation during water use restrictions. If we use a current baseline of eight point five gallon, million gallons for future irrigation, we can supply about twelve acres with adequate irrigation year-round. In times of further water use restrictions, we can easily limit the acreage being irrigated. If we irrigate nine point five acres of the turf, the city can save approximately twenty-one percent of the water over the, over current average. NGF's feasibility study also included a review of renovation of the well for irrigation. NGF's findings and the city's research indicate the following. Due to the well flow limitations, a storage tank would be required for irrigation of the golf course. The volume of the tank would need to be at least thirty thousand gallons. The study that was done in two thousand and twelve had a limited flow rate of fifty gallons per minute, and, uh, there was no pumping beyond fifty gallons per minute. Uh, the current proposal that NGF has indicates a flow rate of up to a hundred and sixty gallons per minute. Unfortunately, we don't know if higher flow rates, uh, such as a hundred and sixty gallons per minute will influence the flows in Stevens Creek. So it's likely as a condition of a permit to be able to reutilize the well that we would need to, uh, conduct ongoing monitoring of Stevens, of flows within Stevens Creek. Additionally, NGF found that the, the capital cost to restore the well and, and add a storage tank is approximately nine hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars with an annual maintenance fee of about ten thousand dollars. Uh, the, the other caveat on this is that groundwork, uh, groundwater use fees have increased substantially over the past five years, and we do see increases, uh, coming up in the future also. This led, uh, us to the conclusion that use of the water well, uh, for irrigation of the, of the golf course is not financially or environmentally sound. Just to give you a sense of the, uh, estimated costs for the, for option A, uh, the initial capital costs are estimated at one point nine seven million. The twenty-five-year ongoing operations and maintenance costs are estimated at eight point one-two million, which leaves us with a total of ten point oh-nine million dollars. These costs do account for projected revenues. Uh, they are in two thousand twenty-two dollars and are not adjusted for inflation. Now we'll look at option B, which is converting the golf course to natural habitat. This study was done by MIG. The study for option B was conducted by MIG, and it looks at converting the entire golf course to a, what's called a native oak savanna. This concept allows for extension of the wildlife corridor and an increase of ecological value within an urban setting. The primary elements of this option include, uh, the expansion of the riparian zone along the creek, bio swell planting of the empty ponds, the establishment of habitat islands for planting oak trees and other native plants that will attract wildlife, the establishment of, uh, wildlife meadows, the wildflower meadows. Also, it's important to note that the existing redwoods would remain on site. This, the plan would also include trails and amenities for public enjoyment. A final element of the plan includes the addition of thirty-five to forty parking spaces to the southern parking lot adjacent to the pool. Some of the benefits of option B include the ability to integrate national, natural landscape in the urban environment. Uh, the irrigation water demand is less than ten percent of that used by the golf course. Uh, it will provide environmental education opportunities. It helps create a stronger connection with nature within an urban setting. And it provides essential habitat patches and corridors that ensure the survival of native species, uh, in a human-dominated landscape. It's important to note that to provide a fully mature natural ecosystem of the site will take many years. But monitoring and progress of the changes has benefits for environmental education. These photos help provide some context for a conversion of the golf course to natural habitat. On the right, you have a sample, an example of, uh, oak woodland with, uh, trails. On the left, we have the current, uh, golf course. Additionally, here's a sample of a, uh, not-yet-mature native habitat island. I believe this is at, uh, the Fowen Ranch. And to the left, the existing golf course. This is a conceptual plan for the conversion to natural habitat. It includes habitat, habitat islands, which are, uh, indicated by the small green circles dispersed throughout the site. Uh, also, there's riparian restoration measure, uh, measures, which are indicated by the long, narrow orange strip along Stevens Creek. Planting of a bio swell is indicated, uh, by the narrow green strip in the location where the historic ponds are. Uh, wildflower meadows in, are indicated by the yellow patches on the site. Additionally, there's approximately, uh, forty-five hundred linear feet of walking trails, which are indicated by the white lines on the site. The cost, uh, twenty-four year, twenty-five year outlook, uh, for the convert to habitat option, option B, includes, uh, a capital investment of one point eight eight million dollars, a twenty-five-year ongoing operations and maintenance costs of ten point two-two million, and a total cost of twelve point one million. Again, these costs, uh, do include projected revenues, and they do not account, um, they do not account for potential grant funding. Um, and they are in two thousand twenty-two dollars, and have not been adjusted for inflation. Now I'd like to show you a cost comparison between the two options, so you can see them side by side. This table provides a summary of the twenty-five-year cost for each option. Additionally, it provides an estimate for the total amount of water used for each option. The key takeaways for this table include the following. The difference in total project cost is just over two million dollars, with costs higher for restoration of natural habitat over the twenty-five-year period. The average annual O and M cost difference between the two options is approximately- The average annual O and M cost difference between the two options is approximately eighty-four thousand dollars per year, uh with costs higher for restoration to natural habitat. Restoration of natural habitat will use less than ten percent of the water needed for the golf course. One other consideration as we view this table is that water use costs will likely continue to rise at levels above the consumer price index. This may narrow cost differences over time. Now that we have a sense for what these options include and what the approximate cost will be, we can discuss, discuss the next steps. Uh, a primary element of what comes next will be to engage the public about their preferences for use of the site. One key element of the public outreach process will be to conduct an on, uh online survey to gather information on residents' preferences and concerns about the options. Staff is ax, asking the commission to provide us with feedback regarding the survey. We'd like your input on any eligibility requirement for the se- survey, as well as your preferences regarding collection of demographic information. Additionally, we'd like to get your general input regarding the current draft survey. Once a final survey is complete, it will be placed on the city's Engage Cupertino webpage for Blackberry Farm Golf Course. It's anticipated the survey will be online within the next week and will close on July the fifteenth. This allows about seven weeks for responses. Currently, the city's public outreach plan includes the following elements. Um, there'll be a citywide distribution of informational postcards regarding the uh Engage Cupertino site, the project, as well as information about how to take the survey. Uh, we currently have an Engage Cupertino website up and running. Uh, we will be conducting the online survey from approximately May fifteenth until July fifteenth. I'm sorry, May twenty-fifth to July fifteen. We have a virtual community meeting scheduled for June the sixth. Uh, once the survey closes, we'll be taking the time to analyze the result and, results and public input. Once uh those results are analyzed, uh we'll return to Parks and Rec Commission for further guidance, and we anticipate that happening in August of twenty twenty-two. Once we receive further guidance from the commission, we will plan to present to city council for recommendations of actions. We hope to do that in September of twenty twenty-two. Tonight, we have with us a consultants that completed the studies and who are helping us with this project to assist with answering any questions. Um, we have MIG with us tonight. They conducted the uh, they conducted the work on the um convert to habitat option. We have NGF, who conducted the minor repairs study, and we also have Cascadia Consulting, who is assisting us with the public outreach process. So we'll take your questions. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for the nice presentation. Yeah, a lot of detailed information. Uh, and I just want to announce that I saw our vice chair, Bigor, joined us. So we have four commissioners on board now.
Hi.
Welcome. Uh, okay, so after this presentation, uh, let's open up the oral communication on this item. Uh, if there's any question from the public, uh, please raise your hand. Uh, I see Suzanne Moore.
Are, are we gonna do commissioner?
I appreciate.
Sorry, generally, we do commissioner questions and clarifying first, so the public has that opportunity to hear those clarifying questions. Sorry.
Sorry.
For interrupting.
If you stop all the sequence. Okay, yeah, so it's time for commissioners to raise clarification questions. Uh, I see. Uh, yeah, Commissioner Stanek, please ask.
Okay, thank you. I have some questions here, funny enough. Um, so thank you for the presentation. Um, we were really looking forward to uh getting more detail about these different options, and so I really uh appreciate all of that. Um, a couple of specific questions for the restoration of the golf course. Do you have an estimate of how long the golf course might need to be closed down for that?
So I um, I, in the conversations I've had with several folks, uh, I have heard that up to a year, but I will let, uh, I'll let Jeff Danar, who's with NGF, uh, respond to that.
Thanks, Lisa. Yeah, that's, that's pretty close to being correct, but it all kind of depends on how aggressive you wanna be for a property like Blackberry Farm. Um, it could be anywhere from nine months to twelve months, including grow-in for the new turf grass. Um, some courses phase it in, um, but that's not something I would recommend because it would be less cost-effective. So you would wanna go in there and do everything at once and just be done with it so that um you're all set to go for the next few years.
Okay, and then on the cost estimate, does the cost estimate include that um elimination of revenues for that year?
It does. I did account for that.
Oh, okay, good. Um. I saw that um the industry standard is for the tees and greens to be upgraded every six to ten years. Is the cost for that included in the twenty-five-year outlook?
It is, yes.
Excellent, thank you. Um, and the comparison of the city labor costs between the um, the golf course and the natural habitat, it looks like the natural habitat are much higher on city labor cost, and I was wondering if you could give us a little bit of clarification on why that might be.
Sure, I can tell you what I know, and Molly or Jenny may be able to chime in also. Uh, so my understanding is that uh this, currently, this site is maintained by a private party. Um, the golf course is predominantly maintained by a private party. Uh, the maintenance of a natural area would probably be taken over by our grounds crews. Uh, after conversations with our ground crew supervisors, there's the assumption that we would need one and a half full-time persons, um, and that's based on a average acreage of uh about twelve acres of, of ongoing grounds maintenance. Additionally, costs for rangers uh to manage the site uh and for safety issues uh would also add to the cost of the site.
Okay, so the cost for, yeah, the subcontracted cost right now, I, I presume those are eliminated or offset in the budget somewhere, or in those cost comparisons?
So, so they are accounted for in, in the uh, in the golf course um uh in option A, so maybe I'm not quite understanding your question.
So I see that um costs are higher for labor with the natural habitat, but there's also gonna be a reduction in costs um on these subbed-out operational costs for the golf course. So is that just uh assumed, i- i- I, I wasn't quite sure. How, how do we see that um in sort of contracted costs go down?
So the contracted cost currently is, it's um, you know, it's, it's relatively low, I will tell you. Uh, it's probably underpriced at this point in time, and that may be some of the difference you're seeing. Um, maybe Molly or Jenny can add to that.
I can tell you that the contracted price right now is about two hundred and five thousand dollars a year to our turf maintenance contract, and that has been um, that contract has been the same for about s- at least seven years now, so there hasn't been any increase in it. So we are currently going out to do an RFP for that maintenance, so I'm expecting that to be higher, but we don't really know what exactly that will be until we get that completed.
Right, and, and I can tell you that I projected an estimated cost of approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
But right now, in the ongoing maintenance costs, the costs that are in the twenty-five-year projection are the two hundred and five?
No, it's two hundred and fifty.
Oh, okay, good. Um, and on the survey, do we have a, an estimate of what we think? Um, in terms of the quantity of responses, what would be a successful survey?
I do not have that answer. I don't know if uh I would call on either Andrea with, with Cascadia. Um, she's somewhat familiar with the city and their operation through other work she's done, or on Brandon.
Sure, yeah, I think um it probably depends on what kind of participation you've seen in past surveys. Um, but, you know, I think one thing we would just wanna make sure of regardless is that um we feel like we've had a good representative sample of the community um respond to the survey, so um I think that's something that will be important to, to consider as we evaluate um the effectiveness of that method.
Okay, and just one more question, and I'm asking this just because I've seen council members ask it in the past, and they've asked it after surveys have come back, and that is, what is the, is there a methodology to um prohibit one individual from submitting multiple responses? And I hope I know the answer to that, but I just wanna get it on the record.
I'll call on Brandon to answer that question.
Yes, sorry about my voice. So uh, um, we're gonna be doing the survey through Engage Cupertino, um, and we can require um someone to register for an account. Um, so we got two options. We're gonna have the survey open, um, just to the general public, um, where anyone can reg, anyone can make a comment and take the survey without registering, or they can register um for an account through Engage Cupertino, and we can only, we can require someone to have a um account with us, and then it locks them into that only, that account can only do one survey response. So those are essentially the two options that we're looking at. So open to everyone, or um only registered uh Engage Cupertino people can use it, and they can only submit one response.
Okay, so if it's, if it's generally open, there's no restriction by IP address or something like that?
No, there is not.
Okay, thanks. I just had to ask that because I know at least one council member um asked that kind of a question. Okay, thanks.
Right, and just to add to that, I do, and Brandon can, Brandon can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, if we do have the more restrictive option, many times that influences the number of responses we get.
Yeah, that, that will, that will definitely hold true here. Um, you're probably, I don't, I can't throw an exact number on it, but you're probably looking at getting anywhere from like, I don't know, thirty to sixty percent fewer um respondents um having a, making people register for an account, so.
Okay, got it, and thank you. Uh, and next, Vice Chair Bigor.
Hi, thank you. There was a next one presentation, and it looks like uh Commissioner Stanek asked some of the questions I had written down here, so, but I do have a couple more with regard to the habitat itself. Um, so, so, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm walking that trail very often now, and I just love that trail there. I do have some questions where, you know, with regard to safety, what has been? Um, what has been, uh, you know, what analysis or what have you done from a perspective of understanding what the safety is? Because you do see signs when you see, um, when you go on that trail that there's rattlesnakes, and there's this and that and everything else there, which is great. I mean, that's what we want in a, in a natural habitat, but um what does, what has been done from the study perspective on these safety issues? And what um is just putting the boards up there relieve the city of any liability? Or what, what can you comment on that?
I would say um perhaps Molly has a little more input on how things operate at McQuillan Ranch. Um, because it would probably be something parallel to that. Um, we did not get into the details of safety-related issues for the site, for the study. That would be something that would be safe for further study if, if that decision's made.
Yeah, I mean, currently at McQuillan Ranch, um, we do have the signage that's out. Um, we notice people, if there's something serious like a mountain lion, we close down the trails. We have a whole policy um for incidents that might come up like that. But aside from that, um, you know, it is a nature preserve. We do expect all of those, those natural beings to be out there, um, and we do our best to just make sure that people are aware if there is some kind of threat.
Okay, so I'm assuming that um as part of it being a natural habitat, uh, and I think some, I think it was mentioned earlier that um there would be a ranger um onsite? Or will there will be a rangers like twenty-four-seven, or is it like just a ranger monitoring it occasionally?
It would likely be a ranger um there during the daytime. So currently, our rangers work um approximately eight-hour days, sometimes longer. Um, they close the scenic circle gate in the evenings. Um, and I would expect their hours to be a little bit longer if we were to go that route. Um, you would probably need rangers who are doing a little bit more interpretive work than what they do currently. So um it definitely wouldn't be overnight. I don't foresee that happening. Um, but for a good portion of the day, there would be ranger service throughout the corridor and on the Stevens Creek Trail.
Okay, and I, if I remember correctly, somewhere up in the MIG report, it said that, you know, they hadn't done a detailed analysis of the cost. I'm trying to remember which page it was on. Um, so can you comment a little bit on the cost that you provided for changing it into a natural habitat? How much you expect, you know, what was the, what was the analysis based on? And how much you expect, you know, it's, of course, it was not adjusted for inflation, um, but besides that, how uh, how accurate or not accurate were the costs?
Sure, sure, I can address that. So, so the MIG report predominantly addresses the capital cost elements, and then, so those, that is what's called a rough order of magnitude cost estimate, which is probably plus or minus twenty percent, and that would be true for both of these reports. Um, beyond the capital costs associated with the site, uh, I work closely with it, with MIG to get more detail on the uh, the, so for the, for the restoration option, the native habitat option, what we are looking at is potentially hiring a contractor to maintain the site for the first five to eight years of the site. So those costs are associated uh with that first five to eight years of contracted costs. And then, go ahead.
Just to be cl- clear, though, the contractor costs are already included uh in the provider, okay.
Yes, yes, and then O and M cost beyond that. I worked with our Parks and Recreation folks, as well as our ground folks, to get estimates from them on, on full-time employees that would need to be used at the site um, once it's opened or converted, as well as uh reviewing the water bills, reviewing the electrical bills, reviewing the sewer bills, taking the averages of all of those um and projecting uh water use. So, so one of the things that I, as I sort of mentioned in uh my, my presentation is that the water use costs are in today's dollars, and as I mentioned, water use costs are likely to increase beyond or higher than or more quickly than the consumer price index. So if anything really influences the difference between the costs, it will be the cost of water.
Okay. All right, uh, so we still have, we don't have, um, I mean, it's still an estimate, but you were saying it is plus or minus twenty percent. Okay, um, one more issue with regard to the bioswell that, that, um, can you put that map back up again and show me where? And does, where that bioswell is in with regard to um, you know, it's basically storm, storm water that goes through, right? So how does that affect, you know, there are a lot of homes in that area?
Right, right, so the, the. Right, right. So the, the proposed bioswell is, is simply a conversion of the existing pond to a lowland area, and they call it a bioswell because that's where water will naturally want to drain to. Um and there'll, there'll be slightly different types of plantings that occur in the bioswell versus the habitat islands, for example. Um so it shouldn't influence anything outside of the site as far as runoff, stormwater runoff goes. And uh Tay, Taylor Peterson is with us for MIG if you'd like to add anything to that, Taylor.
Hello, everyone. Um we just saw that bioswell as a potential feature of, of interest because it's a little bit different topography and as an opportunity to use a little different plant palette rather than going in and regrading the site at that cost. So that was, that was the thought behind um the bios, the area we call the bioswell. It's just a little lower area in um, in topography, something interesting to look at as you walk by on a trail.
Okay, so i- if I understand that correctly, will it, the current, there's a Stevens Creek, there's like a, there's a creek flowing through, so will this be close to that?
It's nearby, it, it's nearby, it may be hydrologically connected. So water might collect in that lower area and then percolate into the creek.
Okay. And as a result of suggesting that bioswell, that bioswell that comes in, we won't have any additional cost or anything else that was not estimated, right?
No, it's just a way of treating an already existing feature.
Okay, okay, that's all I had for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor.
And thank you, uh and Commissioner uh Kumara Penn. Yeah, hi.
I'm trying to unmute it. Okay, I did it. Okay, um thank you again. Um I think very well articulated as well, Lisa, the, the report and how to compare. I was just taking notes, but a lot of things are very clear. So thank you for putting that out and for the consultants worked on those detailed study. A few questions on, on the first one on the golf course site. Uh one, the safety issue specifically mentioned that there is general level or uneven terrace issue. So I assuming that is common irrespective of which option we go, that has to be addressed, I believe. Is that a good assumption?
Um that is a good question. It, uh the way the current um design is laid out, and again, we're just, this is again a more conceptual plan for the return to habitat option. Um there would need to be grading uh of the site and to, to install things like the, the tr, the trail um to help make it ADA compliant, et cetera. Um so of course, anything that was meant to be walked on uh would end up being ADA compliant. And then Jeff can also, Jeff is with NGF, um and he can address some of the concerns that are currently uh on this, on the Gulf Forest site.
Yeah, from the uh golf side of things, um to bring the course up to compliance with ADA, the, the changes would actually be quite minimal. There's really only two T-boxes that are just a little bit too steep for a lot of people to walk up, and that just requires some very minor grading. Now, there may be some maybe issues uh close to the clubhouse and around the building and everything, but those are, those are, those are things that are gonna have to be addressed anyway um eventually. But speaking just from the golf course standpoint, to, to bring things into compliance i- is actually a very minimal part of the overall scope.
All right, yeah, the, so the question was also, second question I have is that if there is any of those leveling needs to be done, I assuming that the cost is included on other side as well, which is on the natural habitat, right?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, got it, thank you. So the second question I have, uh what do we mean by the uh reduced acre, irrigation of reduced acre? I saw those many options.
Right.
What does that mean? Does it mean, are we compromising the quality or if you needed the minimum twelve point five, whatever is the one? But if you reduce it, are we really compromising any of those green area or whatnot?
Right, right, yeah. It's, it, it gets a little bit confusing, and part of that is uh, you know, the difference in water use prior to two thousand fourteen. We watered what we wanted, when we wanted, how we wanted. We watered all twelve and a half acres or thereabouts. Um and then two thousand fourteen hit, and uh the folks, the company maintaining the, the uh, the course and the irrigation system were asked to reduce costs considerably, and they did an incredible job reducing the costs. Um so now we have a baseline water usage of about eight and a half million gallons annually. And um the way that they've achieved that, they've, they've increased some of the efficiency of the, of the uh sprinkler heads relative to pre-two thousand thirteen or two thousand fourteen. Um but predominantly, they've turned off heads. So they have stopped irrigating up to a third of the area that they currently irrigate. Um and that's predominantly the, the reason we see such an extreme drop in the water usage. What we found from the NGF study is that if we put in a new system, we'll want to put in a new system for the full twelve and a half acres uh of the Gulf Forest. And if we irrigate all twelve and a half acres of the Gulf Forest, we will be uh using slightly more water, plus or minus four percent more. For us to maintain our current usage, we would be needing to irrigate about twelve acres. And for us to severely cut water usage, we would need to reduce the total acres we're irrigating. And that, that does mean that you will see, just like uh over the past four or five years, you've seen browning of the course during certain periods of time, and we would see something like that also if we reduce acreage.
All right, thank you. And couple uh more questions, and uh in the option A, when we talk about the capital cost of one point nine seven million, I think, and overall, you said there is an adjusted revenue. So that's, whatever the revenue is already adjusted, but I see the final comparison. Can you call that it is minus revenue? The revenue is already taken in dot com, correct?
That is correct, that is correct. So revenue, so actual O and M costs uh for, let's see if I can pull that up. Um, just share this real quick. Can you all see that? Uh let's see, right here. Are you able to see that?
Yeah, I have the chart, that's what I need to, yeah.
Okay, great, great.
So the, the question was twofold. One is um you adjust for twenty-five years the revenue. It's nine point three million, right? Estimated revenue from the golf course.
Correct.
What's in today and how do we project that one based on the number of people increasing? Or what is the calculation? The, it's pretty good, significant, but I wanna understand what the rationale began. What's the revenue now and how do we project it? For twenty-five years and what percentage of, of usage?
Right, so we did not project, so we projected a continued use of approximately twenty-eight thousand rounds per year. And uh, and um you can see on line item number two, the total expenditure for O and M over twenty-five years uh of the repair of the Gulf Forest is about seventeen and a half million dollars. Um and then we minus out the estimated revenue, which we're projecting again because we can't really say it's gonna go up, it's gonna go down. Um we are just kind of assuming a steady state of that. So, and that steady state includes the total rounds annually as well as the total water used. Um so line item two A, irrigation water costs at one and a half million dollars. That assumes we, we maintain an eight point five million gallon a year average.
And with the cost we have today, with the cost, there's no increase to cost is accounted in that, correct?
Correct, yes.
On both the side, because you took one, okay, excellent. So the other question on the same, there are, I have two more questions on this, is that city labor cost and the contractor O and M uh operation maintenance services are also put in there as seven million each. Is that also, we use the same, what's the expenses today and we just extrapolated for twenty-five years? Or did we put any other measures? Assuming that you used for both, both options existed in calculation?
Exactly, they both are the same measuring stick, and I did not use labor cost increases, um cost of living or CPI indicators.
Okay, and in the city labor cost, the nine point five nine million for the habitat one is a two million increase. Is it uh additional hiring we need to do it to maintain the habitat, or what is that cost? Additional city labor cost, what does that mean?
Right, so um the difference between the existing golf course and the natural habitat option is that the natural habitat option would be uh, would be maintained by our grounds crews. So that, those costs become internal to the city and, and li, in um, in labor costs. So that's the pred, predominantly the number. Adi, in addition to that, we have the additional ranger time um that Molly was mentioning earlier.
I see, so that's the two million plus. The rationale behind the two million plus is ranger cost and maybe additional ground staff maybe needed.
Correct.
Awesome. And if I, then I think I'll like to switch to the option B. The question I have is on the um I, the total expense, one point eight eight, it says capital cost. So now I'd like to understand, what is the capital cost of one point eight eight? I could able to visualize or imagine the one point nine seven capital cost for irrigation. Sorry, on the golf side is you will be implementing all those pipes and a lot of this capital one-time investments, right? But what is that constitutes a capital cost for the habitat side, habitat side?
So I'll call on, I'll call on Taylor to kind of walk us through the logic on what uh, what those costs and uh would in, would include.
So the, the predominant capital cost for the natural habitat option are the trails. That's mostly um, most of the expenditure. And then the other items um are uh creating the habitat islands and planting them and using drip irrigation and installing that. And what am I forgetting, Lisa? There are a couple of amenities, some benches.
I see, okay.
And then uh I think the parking, the additional parking at, at the pool.
Oh, this includes those thirty-five to whatever forty additional parking. That also, okay, that makes sense. So all those infrastructure is what considered into the capital for the habitat side.
Correct, and it also includes the removal of the, of the netting and the uh, the posts associated with the netting.
Okay.
And fencing.
And, and some fencing, yeah.
Awesome, no, thank you. That's, that's, at this point, I think that's all I have with questions now. Thank you, appreciate it.
Sure.
Get on a mute chair.
Oh, oh, sorry. Uh thank you for the clarification, and I so Vice Chair Begor have question again.
Yeah, I just have a couple more questions. I promise it won't take long. Um uh the, the new um looking at option B where you have the natural habitat, um just now somebody mentioned that there would be drip irrigation for some of that habitat, and how long will that drip irrigation continue to be there? Uh and were, are the water costs um, you know, for that, I mean, that drip has to be connected to some source.
Right, right.
When uh that correctly estimated in the, in the operational costs, that's the first question, and then go ahead, answer.
Sure, um so yes, the uh drip irrigation would be a uh, it's, it's, the installation is part of the capital cost. Um and the operations and maintenance costs associated with that are included in the um, in the estimates. Um the, the water cost uh is considerably lower. It's um, the cost for golf course, uh for golf course irrigation is estimated at about one point, almost one point six million. And for the natural habitat option, it's uh approximately a hundred thousand. Um so that, that is accounted for by use of a drip irrigation system. And uh there were several reasons for that incredible reduction. First of all, um the irrigation would only need to take place uh on or around the habitat islands uh for, for up to eight years. I think the estimate I used was an establishment period for approximately eight years. Um and then the idea is that the irrigation system can be shut off or very, very limited.
Okay, um then the contracted services, um from the option A, I'm assuming that's, you know, all, that's the seven million, whatever is got, is for, you know, mowing the grass and whatever else. What do you expect will be the contracted services for the natural habitat? Just what they are, what are the services?
Right, so this assumes that for that five to eight-year period, I'd have to look back at my notes to say whether it probably accounted for an eight-year period uh where we would actually hire um a, a contractor to maintain the initial, to ensure the initial establishment of, of the native vegetation. Um that way, it can be, you know, people with the right expertise can focus on ensuring the establishment of that period. And, and that is the predominant cost for the contracted labor.
Okay, and then I guess the last question, which I should have asked earlier, is that what revenue do you expect to get from that habitat? Even though it's half a million?
Right, uh Molly, Molly can probably address that.
Our assumption is that we would offer a variety of classes and possibly some summer camps um out in that area. So that, that's where that revenue was projected from.
Okay, wouldn't that be part of the Parks and Rec revenue in general as classes? And why would that be specific to the, I mean, it would be a habitat associated class, but why would it be put into this option over here? Wouldn't it be part of typical Parks and Rec revenues? Maybe Director, you could address that?
Um I mean, I mean, it would be the same as the golf course essentially, right? So we're saying that the golf course is gonna provide this amount of revenue. So we're saying that the new natural habitat would then provide this amount of, you know, the same amount of revenue that we had, had projected, which I think was about five hundred thousand dollars over the course of twenty-five years. Um it's just that that, that would be just like saying that like McQuillan Ranch brings in X amount of dollars.
All right, okay, thanks.
Right, and, and I'll add to that, you know, there, there is a relatively high level of confidence at this point from the folks I've talked to that we would be able to find grant funding uh for the conversion option, if that's the direction the city decides to go. And I, I just put a number in the comparative cost analysis of approximately six hundred thousand dollars with the assumption of a, about a three hundred thousand dollar grant in the initial construction, and then another three hundred thousand in ongoing grant funding. But those, those are not, that's, that, that grant funding is not included in the cost that you'd see. So you'd actually see a potential reduction in total costs.
Excellent, okay, thanks.
And thank you, uh and yeah, you already asked several questions I had. Uh but because there are so many numbers, I still have three questions regarding the uh comparative costs uh of the twenty-five-year outlook. Uh the first question is regarding the revenue for next twenty-five years of option A, the golf course revenue. I just want to know, because in the presentation, I saw the, the revenue difference um for pre-pandemic and after pandemic. Uh so I'm, I'm just wondering, this projection is based on the revenue pre-pandemic or after? Because I use this number divided by twenty-five, I think it's higher than pre-pandemic, but lower than current year. So also I'm just curious, how to, how did you calculate the nine million? Um yeah, three, seven, eight, six, two, four dollar.
Right, uh well, it, it sounds like I hit something in between the two. Right, uh well, it it sounds like I hit something in between the two, um I'd have to look back at my spreadsheet specifically. Um, I think uh now now thinking about, I think what I did was, you know, pre pre pandemic. We had twenty eight thousand rounds plus or minus, post pandemic, uh we, you know, those rounds increased. I believe the assumption I made in the revenue was a fifteen fifteen percent increase over pre covid numbers. So a slight increase, but not as high as we see in the in the current covid environment. So that's probably the number that you're seeing there.
Uh, got it, yeah, so so at first I I'm wondering if that's because of the in inflation adjust. But in the presentation, I saw there's no inflation adjust, okay, so this is just an estimate, good to know. And uh second question, I noticed um comparing the water cost between option A and option B. Uh, option A's water cost is about ten times more than the option B, but the cost is fifteen times. So does that mean if we use more water, we will get the higher cost or maybe like the penalty for our city?
Um, there might be someone on the call better suited to answer this, but in my review of of the water cost, there are um. There are triggers um for for different levels of water use. Um, and uh that that may be something that gets accounted for also. You know, water use is not, it's not a linear, um it's not a linear calculation because you always have base costs. So you're paying not only for the water you're using, but you're paying for the entire system to operate beyond that, so. Um, so that it may not be a linear correlation between the two costs.
Okay, and my last question is about the water cost for the option B, natural habitat. Uh, I assume if we plant some li- like oak trees or some other uh big trees. Uh, the first ten year, maybe we need to, yeah, give water in more. But after ten years, when they have enough shade and when their root goes really big. Uh, I assume the water cost should drop dramatically. But in this table, is that included or you didn't consider that just the?
I did consider that and and Tay might be able to add to this conversation also, my assumption in this is eight years of irrigation. Um, for predominantly the habitat islands, um of of, you know, which are of primary concern. And we wanna ensure we get good establishment um of the area, so that number you see is an an eight year period of time. And Tay, do you have anything to add to that?
I I would just say that you do water a little more heavily in the first three years or so, and then you start to taper off. So that the plants go find, go deep and find their water naturally and then continue to survive.
Okay, good to know, thank you so much, all the detailed answer. Uh, so are there any more questions? I didn't see any other commissioner with hand. Uh, so I think, yeah, we are done for this clarification part. And thank you for everyone answering our questions, now we did have a lot of question. Okay, so next, uh this our communication part on this agenda item. Uh, yeah, we uh welcome our community members who have question for this agenda item. Please raise your hand, and I see Suzanne Moore, yeah, you can talk, you have three minutes.
Hello? Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Second.
Yes, okay, wonderful presentation, very exciting, you know, one way or the other, you know, this is a treasure for our city. And and other people, uh so I appreciate uh all the work that they've done here. My my uh I I was, I wanna comment on the survey, I don't have it in front of me. Uh, this is just from memory, but um one of the things is, um it talks about very. Uh, you know, both both uh ideas and and it's it's very, it's very clear, I think, what what the true alternative is. And it talks about how the costs are a- almost the same, uh but for me, um. It doesn't say anything about the water issue, I mean, I mean, we're talking about fourteen million gallons versus. A hundred and sixty eight to two hundred and twelve million gallons. And I don't know how you would state that on the survey uh without biasing the survey, you know what I'm saying? But I think it's kind of important for for the residents and others that use the area to know the difference in the water usage. Especially with global warming and and everything, and the old Girl Scout in me kind of really feels that's important, so. If there is some way of stating that, um as I said, without totally biasing, for me, I'd say biases things. You know, that would be important, um and the other little minor issue is when you're talking about the Stevens Creek. A trail, um I think it's good um for Cupertino to do slash McClellan. Um, because it it kind of, it kind of, it makes it more personal, I mean, uh so. To when you when you state about there's the Blackberry Farm Golf Course, there's Blackberry Farm, and then there's McCle- McClellan, and they're all part of the Stevens Creek. Um, trail, so somehow do a slash so that it kind of makes it real to to many of the residents. Um, otherwise, I as I said, I think one way or the other, it's it's all good, okay, thank you.
Thank you for your input, uh and the next speaker is uh Connie Cunahan. Yeah, you have three minutes.
Oh, thank you, um can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
Okay, uh thank you, um Chair and Commissioners, um I was very interested in this topic. Um, for a long time, I enjoy all all the parks uh in in our city. Um, I was very impressed with the report and the level of um care that was taken to uh to. Show both of the uh process, both of the options in um in their um in a full light. Um, what I would say is that, um oh, and I'm impressed by the outreach that you've done to the community too as well. Uh, I personally have a preference for the restoration approach. Uh, the type of outdoor activities my family does are walking and birding, enjoying nature in many ways. National bar parks, peaches and other outdoor places. Um, and as a as an Autobahn Society member, I I I know that natural spaces are necessary. As our city becomes more urban, um water is becoming scarce, I noticed the first speaker said that as well. Using California native plants, bushes and grasses will reduce the need for outdoor watering systems. And the projections long range do show that um the natural system will use less water overall. And with possible droughts in the future, I think we really need to pay attention to that. Um, someone talked about adding that to the draft survey as a as something to be considered. And I think that's a really good idea, um let's see, what else was I gonna say? Oh, those habitat islands, including flowering shrubs and native oaks, um that's just wonderful. And I didn't know about the swale, if it was possible to put trees near there as well, um. And one note about the water was if the site is converted to natural habitat, water will be less than ten percent. That used for the golf course, and I noticed too, you were talking about um the amount of people who would be golfing in the future. And as I have read, um golfing becomes less and less done over the years, so I'm just wondering if that um. Amount of money being put into a sport that isn't going to be used that much is as beneficial. As a place where everyone can come out, uh especially using the ADA walkways and so forth. Um, so again, I wanna thank everybody for their um the work on this, this is just amazing, and I think um. Both although both s- s- solutions sound very good, I do have a preference for the natural habitat. So thank you all for your time and um I will, uh I'm finished, thank you.
Uh, thank you for your comments, uh and now, um. Kevin, do we have any written communication from the community?
Yes, we did receive one, and Jessica, would you like to read it off for us?
Okay.
So we did receive one written communication on this item from George Max at First T Silicon Valley that I will read out loud. Dear Chair, Shu and Commissioners, First T Silicon Valley, FTSV urges the city of Cupertino. And its Parks and Recreation Commission to preserve Blackberry Farm Golf Course and consider improving it in ways that include natural habitats. FTSV develops youth through golf at municipal golf courses throughout Silicon Valley. We teach children important life lessons using golf as a vehicle in our golf course and school programs. Respect for oneself, others and one's surroundings is possibly the most important core value that we teach. This includes being good stewards of the natural spaces in which golf courses exist. Since two thousand, we have positively impacted the lives of over eighty six thousand children in Santa Clara County. Sixteen thousand in golf course classes and seventy thousand in school programs. Cupertino residents consistently compromise about five percent of our class participants. All youth, regardless of background or ability to pay, may participate. As a result, over thirty five percent are from low income families and eighty five percent are non white. Over ninety percent of our families and school teachers consistently report seeing behavioral and character improvements in their children. We rely upon municipal golf courses for our character building programs and for our participants to develop into lifelong golfers. We strongly encourage our participants to play golf courses like BBF outside of our regular classes. We are a longtime partner of youth on course, which subsidat- which sub- subsides rounds. So that children may play BBF for just five dollars. Silicon Valley ranks near the bottom nationally in golf courses per capita. So we at FTSV are passionate about helping the Bay Area preserve the courses that we already have. FTSV is fortunate to have Rancho del Pueblo Golf Course, East San Jose, Gabalon College Golf Course, Gilroy. And Baylands Golf Links Palo Alto as environmentally environmentally friendly program locations. All three are beautiful natural settings for the public and FTSV participants to enjoy. Rancho del Pueblo is certified by Autobahn International as a cooperative sanctuary and Baylands Golf Links. Is a shining example of an excellent golf course coexisting with natural habitats. We believe that Cupertino, like Palo Alto, has an e- a unique opportunity to enjoy the best of both worlds by improving BBF. While preserving natural spaces, this would benefit all residents and give FTSV even more reason to encourage our participants to play. And appreciate the natural beauty of BBF, respectfully, George Max.
Well, thank you, Jessica, um so I I think it's the end of public comments. Uh, and now it's time to start discussion, you know, uh Molly, you raised your hand, yeah.
Uh, yes, um Lisa, I'm wondering if um you might be willing to share your screen to the slide that talks about. What we're looking for in terms of survey guidance.
Right.
We'll move into pop into um discussion.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
I could also, I can share the the survey itself, and I think I I think I understand what the um what the requirements are. If that i- if that works better for folks.
Uh, yeah, maybe maybe we can start with the the two questions we're looking at and then move into the the questions.
Sure, let's see here. Oh geez, I'm still learning how to navigate Zoom, okay. Can everyone see that? Yes, no, maybe? Good, good. Okay, um so the two primary questions that that we have uh about the survey. For the commission is, uh we're we're seeking your input on the eligibility requirement and. Uh, I I think we've learned that there's there's probably two ways to approach this, and one is to require registration. Uh, for the survey and one is to allow sort of anyone to take the survey and. And I think we're looking for guidance from you regarding that.
Okay, so I yeah, uh I see Commissioner uh Kumara Pan.
Wait, I think this is just a discussion and answering, right, the Chair, so there's not a question in the session, okay. So a couple of things again, my points maybe related to question as well, so is this available for anyone outside of Cupertino as well? Or is it mainly reserved for Cupertino, it is for everyone?
I believe it's for anyone who accesses accesses the survey.
Okay, yeah, so definitely in that, again, I'll leave it to the other commissioners' individual opinion, but I. This is very, very important if it is being predominantly used here, and I I think definitely would like to have an eligibility criteria to set it up. Either be an account or whatever method we are trying to do, because opening up a survey without any verification in one way or other. It is gonna taint the survey and definitely it is mainly for the Cupertino specific one. And others can get benefit too, you know, I'm not saying that not, but I would like to definitely put in some measures to really track. Or establish some eligibility criteria uh to do that one. So let me stop there for now, that's my input and maybe we'll go for a discussion, but I know the account creation, I think earlier. One of us have talked about it, whatever method we end up in doing it, but I think that's what, even though it restricts the. Number of people doing it, but otherwise the problem on the other side is completely, we have no idea. Recent days even bots can just keep on going and working for it and just getting the survey, I can, not me, like in general, people can. Uh, generate a bot and the bot can just go and do it in this advanced state, and I, we don't want to taint the survey like that, so. Definitely I prefer to have an eligibility criteria to be established, so that's my input, but I'll le- I'll leave it to that now.
Okay, thanks for your input, and Commissioner Stanek.
Okay, thank you, so I I guess I'm not sure what you mean by eligibility to take the online survey. Do you mean only Cupertino residents versus people who work her, what what is the question there?
Right, so I think the initial thinking was to try to target or ensure that we, that that only Cupertino residents. May be able to take the survey, um after having spoken with Brandon, we realized there's limitations associated with that. Um, of course, we ask in the survey itself if the person is a Cupertino resident, so we're relying on their. Uh, relying on their honesty associated with that. Um, but you know, at this point, it looks like the only two o- options are to require um to require registration or not. And that, the effect of that would be limiting the number of times a person could come in and. And actually complete the survey, and Brandon, if you have anything to add there?
No, I think you covered it all.
Okay, so, yeah, my stance is that we don't wanna make it difficult for people, we we want as much feedback as we can get. Um, the the work program survey that we did, um I believe that that was limited to. You could take it once, um and, uh you know, I know that because. I I know there was a question from council, and I think, I mean, so I I took that survey and I wanted to expand on my. My comments, and so I tried to go back in, and it wouldn't let me, so I really wasn't trying to vote twice on the work program. But um I did know that it it did limit me from going in from my computer a second time to to redo the survey. So somehow, and I don't think that was a registration, it was just a, you know, do you live or work in the city? Or and what do you wanna see in our work program, it was like two questions, it was very simple, but there was a limitation. And so I I think. And so I, I think we definitely want to know when people are, are answering the questions, and hopefully, you know, it's on the honor system, are, are you a resident of Cupertino, you know, we could have a, a follow-on question to ask for an address that's optional just to kind of confirm that, um, you know, it, it makes someone think twice if they're going to have to actually go find a, an address that might be bogus. Um, so, so that might be one way, but I think we want to make it as available as possible and track, um, who the people are in terms of the responses that we're getting, if we're getting, um, you know, what I would expect is, as we've seen before, is that there are a lot of people who use Blackberry Farm Golf Course, and they're gonna want to come in and say, we want the golf course. And, um, we should know where people are living, um, if, you know, with respect to their responses, and so hopefully we can, we can track that data, and then are, are we talking about the demographic data, are you, are you wondering, um, do you have suggestions, or do you want to talk about that in a minute? Get through this eligibility first, and then we'll talk about demographic data? Then that's all I have on that.
Are there additional questions regarding the eligibility? Criteria? If not, we can move to demographics.
Uh, do you have, Lisa, sorry, I, is it okay, I call chair, uh? On the eligibility criteria, I just wanted to answer.
Okay.
Yeah, question raised by Commissioner Stanek, so, uh, typically, when you do it, it's, uh, the restriction of the next one is tracked by the session, typically, so that means if you are on the same browser, if you are doing it now, generally it will not allow you, because sometimes they keep the session tracked, but if you close the browser and start again launching, it will allow you to go again, unless that way they track, it's not IP-level tracking, typically, they don't do it, rather, it will be on a session-level tracking. So if you are on the same session, it will not allow you, but close the browser and go, it will allow you. So I just wanted to put that in it, if it's not allowing for the first time, just an information. That's all, I don't have any specific questions, I just wanted to provide some insights to Commissioner Stanek's question.
From the commission perspective for guidance to our, our project manager here, what guidance are we giving?
Yeah.
I mean, my guidance is to make it as easy as possible and ask additional clarifying questions to ask someone to, um, to identify if they are a resident or not, or if they work here. So, I'd like to hear from the other commissioners.
Okay, so, uh, Vice Chair Pico?
Yeah, in the, the first question in the survey says, do you live in Cupertino, work in Cupertino, go to school in Cupertino, et cetera? So if we do, if you're assuming that the person lives in Cupertino, you can ask for an address. If they work, you know, you're still gonna go verify, I mean, we don't have a proper way. Um, there's also the option of I visit shops and restaurants and, you know, stuff like that, so I don't know that we can necessarily um, make this more complicated, um, so we'll just, you know, live it to the best. But there, aren't there any tools, um, maybe, you know, we can take, um, aren't there any tools for sort of sorting out through this, I mean, this is, any survey can now be answered with a bot, right? Um, so there must be some way we can figure this out, is there, is there a beta version of some tool that, that sorts through this, just asking in general?
Right, yeah, um, Brenton, I don't know if you have additional input associated with that, or perhaps Andrea Martin, uh, may have some.
Not quite sure I fully understood the question, maybe if you could try clarifying it a little bit more for me?
Okay, so the first question on the survey says, uh, which of the following describes you? I live in Cupertino, I work in Cupertino, I go to school in Cupertino, et cetera, et cetera, and then there's an option that says other. So technically, even if I ask, I mean, if I'm not a person who's living in Cupertino, for a person who's living in Cupertino, technically, we can ask them the address, and you know, you'd think that we will verify it, so people will try to be honest, but if you answer other, there's no way of us verifying anything about that person, right? I mean, what, yeah, other, I visit Cupertino, whatever. So, in that case, I mean, that person, a person can come in and say other, and potentially, you know, keep, uh, create a new session each time and really mess up this thing, just basically use a bot to answer this question, what I'm asking is, answer the survey. So what I'm asking is, isn't there any kind of tool available that can maybe say, oh, if I've got some hundreds of one type of answer versus ten of another type of answer, isn't there any tool that does some kind of an analysis and say, well, this is a bot, this is not a bot, kind of, uh, kind of thing, uh, this is a bot answer, this is not a bot answer? Uh, is there such a tool, at least a beta version of it, something you can test with? Because this is going to happen with any survey, right? People like something, then they can potentially create a bot that answers, uh, the way they.
I can answer Brandon others if they, if you.
Yeah, I was, I, I'll just comment on Engage Cupertino, um, so, when, when we run the reports, um, we can go ahead and see all the, pretty much all the responses, it can filter everything out. Um, there's no tool on Engage Cupertino, at least a survey platform, that goes through and specifically targets bots or tells you if it's a bot. Um, I will say in our previous surveys, we haven't come across anything that does look like it's bots are piling in responses to any of our surveys. Um, that, that's about as far as I can probably comment on that, um, there might be external tools, um, that you could use for this, um, but I'm, I'm unaware of them and haven't used them, so.
Commissioner Chair, if it is okay, I want to jump into answer.
Uh, yes, yeah, please.
Thank you, so, uh, Brandon and maybe to answer the, um, Commissioner issues one, it's like a gotcha and many other alternatives outcome in any survey tool you have, it's so easy to just put it there to stop any of them, so, it's, again, it's for overall, for city, uh, getting the, right, the kind of right type of inputs, and even avoid the DDoS attack where it can bring down the site too, in case if any, uh, people wanted to do. So there are ways which are very simple things to implement, which definitely I can help, and Brian and I would work with the city or the team, Engage Cupertino team on implementing such a simple thing could avoid this bot problem, and because that is becoming a problem everywhere, and I think we should take some action, and it is not at all a major problem, and there are simple ways to just enable such a human, like, we all see that, whenever you go and take some survey, it says, okay, find out what are the streetlights, what are the boats, what are the things, it lasts few, there are many, many different types of things can be included, so that the bot will fail miserably, so that we can get the right input, it's, it's, it's simple, it's easy to implement it, and we should start putting that our way the site will get, so, again, I'm happy to work with the staff, Brandon you, or Engage Cupertino site, whoever it is offline, um, I'm come from the tech world, and, and if there is any help needed, I definitely, I can guide and, and do that too, just want to put that suggestion on the table.
Okay, thank you, I, I do see Andrea Martin, who's with Cascadia Consulting, who's assisting us with the public outreach on this, as our hand raised.
Yeah, thanks, Lisa, um, I, my understanding is that the survey will be hosted on the Engage Cupertino site, so I don't have as much insight into that particular platform, but I do know in the past, um, one approach that we've used is tracking IP addresses, um, and identifying if there are multiple responses coming from the same IP address, um, and using that as a way to flag and filter out, um, foul play, and, uh, and then also looking at the, the date and timestamp of the survey response, and if you're getting, you know, a bunch of survey responses at the exact same day and time, then that can also be a, a flag, so, um, I don't know if that's possible in the Engage Cupertino platform, but that could be one approach here as well.
Brenton, do you know the answer to those questions?
Uh, if Engage Cupertino can track IP addresses, I'm sure it does track them, but I don't know if we have access to that data, so I'll, I'll have to, I'll have to look into that and follow up.
Okay, thank you. Great. Are there any other comments associated with eligibility?
Yeah, I have, uh, some comments. Um, so regarding the Susan Moore mentioned for the question regarding the cost, and she, she said, because in the survey, we only let residents know um, the cost of option A and op- option B about almost the same, but we didn't mention the water assumption and the water cost for two options, in, is it? Yeah, so, is it possible to add this information for this question, yeah, I'm so wondering.
I don't, I don't think it's a problem adding that information, um, we would want to do it, um, in a very straightforward sort of non-comparative way, but there's no reason we can't add, uh, that, that information.
Okay, and I see, uh, Commissioner Stanek has something to say.
Okay, uh, yeah, I was just gonna comment with respect to the bots, um, I know we think we're very important, but, um, I don't think that these kind of surveys are that high, um, of that high huge interest that we're going to get people generating a lot of bots to do it, so I don't think it's a real practical problem. I know it's something that the council is concerned about, so, um, we always want to be sure that we can answer that question from them, but, um, and I think if you have two or three responses from the same address, it may be that two or three people from that, for them IP address, maybe two or three people in that home are answering the survey, and so that would be appropriate. Um, so, I, from a practical perspective, I don't think that it, it's a real practical problem, but I think we should just be aware of it and, and be looking, um, for it. Um, I agree with Chair and, and the comment from Susan Moore that, um, the, there, there should be a comment about the water usage, uh, difference, and I, and I don't, I think you have to compare, I don't know how you can do it without being comparative. There's this option, there's that option, we're looking between the two. Um, so, the other thing, a- and I have a, a number of other comments on the survey, but I don't know if you just want to go back to your slide where you talked, so that we can stay focused on that, and then get to the survey question.
Sure, sure, we can, um, are you still seeing that slide, the public outreach slide there?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the other question that we wanted to garner some, uh, input from you on was the, uh, collection of demographic data, and the two primary, um, data points we would be looking for would probably be age and then ethnicity, uh, the two that, that, that we're considering adding to the, uh, to the survey, just like your input on that.
Yeah, I think, I think that's fine, I, I don't think those are onerous questions.
The same here, right, sorry, Chair, I, I raised to, to answer the same question, so.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, uh, I'm going to be the controversial one here, uh, why do you want to know that? Simply, I mean, it's a survey, you want to know what's going on. What are you gonna, why do you want to know what the age of the person is, or what their ethnicity is, their ethnicity? Um, I, I mean, whatever, why do you want to know the question, and secondly, what are you gonna do with that data?
Right, right, well, the, the question is up for debate, uh, that's why we're here discussing it, so, um, I don't think the city is an investment one way or the other about which direction we go. Um, it just seems to be a common question that's asked in surveys. Um, as far as the benefit of it, um, it just helps us sort of, uh, increase the, the particle size of, of the input we're getting, essentially, um, so that we can granulate, okay, where are these responses coming from? Um, and, uh, and who's, what, what demographic is most interested in one versus the other, but, um, is there an overall benefit, um, I think that's up for debate.
Okay, and Commissioner Stanek?
Thank you, I guess my comment on that is collecting it, not that you would do anything with it, but it would tell you if you had a representative sample of your population, and so if it, if it skewed, and maybe not the, uh, well, I mean, it could be, if you get, um, certainly on the age thing, if you get primarily an older skew, then, you know, you'll know that you're not getting a cross-section from the whole community. And, um, if it's primarily, say, a one particular race that is not, um, representative of the whole community, that you say, well, that particular subgroup is more engaged in this particular thing, but it's not necessarily representative of the whole community, so I think it can, it can give you that information, and you can make a judgment about it if it's important later or not, but at least you have the information, otherwise, if you come at it and you, and you didn't ask the question, then you just don't know, that's my thought on it.
Okay, uh, that's fair, that's a very fair answer, but my thing is, um, just, so, this is a survey that we're sending out to, you know, it's on Engage Cupertino, and we're gonna send postcards to everybody in Cupertino saying, take the survey. Only a certain race decided to take the survey, you can't make the other people take it, so getting that is a data point, for sure. Uh, but, you know, or, or certain age group, all those people that play in the BlackBerry Golf Course may be the only ones that, um, that, uh, that participate in the survey. But then, we don't know that, uh, for sure, I mean, we might be able to get it, but from age and from race, we don't get that information, we get that from the survey itself. So, I, I'm just being, like I said in the beginning, you know, it's like, why do you want to know? Half the problem in our world is because we try to put classify, 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 so that's, is that giving us some quantitative information that helps us make a decision, if not, why ask the question, is where I'm coming from?
Um, so, uh, Commissioner Kumara Pan?
Thank you, Chair, no, I, there is some rational behind my, I said, yes, it's okay, it's twofold, number one, once we collect these ages, age group, whatever, we know that it is going to help feed the program, whatever we, option A, B are picked up, we know that when we talked about what kind of programs we are going to put together in the habitat or any of them, so at least it is in a data to that, okay, these kind of programs are gonna attract these many people, so, we talked about revenue, we talked about more amenities. So it is a good data to help us to drive what, how we plan to invest, how we wanted to do either of those. So in that part, the age will be really useful, at least for the park staff and for their planning and future planning of those things, so that's a first reason why I asked. The ethnicity, the reason I asked is that, again, we talked about low-income families and other ethnicities in general in the previous report, it would be good to know that who really loves or which area represented us, I think Commissioner Stanek talked about. It's a good thing that if, if it is not reaching out to, it is again a data point for the staff that based on the prior history of the, um, uh, surveys, we may be, we may not be reaching out at one particular set of people and stuff, and then at least it gives a data point, it's, I, it's not, first one is to make a decision on future investment, the second one is to see that how our outreach is really going on, to see are we really doing the outreach? If not, if that, we need to do it on that particular, on a different language, for example, if you had to put only in English, do we need to put it in Chinese, do we need to put in Spanish, all those things would help, and if the survey is handling in all of them, it's okay. So that's how I see it, is just to serve the community more, not to make, second part is not to make any decision, but to serve more for the outreach, the first one is to help make a decision on our future investment. That's just my rational behind making that, saying that yes, to both. Again, e- everybody's opinion is correct, so I'm not saying, well, something is wrong or something, I just want to make sure why I said that both are, if both are good, there's nothing ominous, so that's my point, Chair, that's pretty much it.
So for me, I, I have question about what kind of, uh, demographic data uh, you're going to collect in this survey, because in our past survey for parks, Because in our past survey for parks, I only see some question regarding the age, but I didn't see any other information collected. So I'm wondering, when staff ask this question, do we need to collect those data? Wha- what kind of data you referred to?
Right, I think we're referring specifically to age and uh ethnicity. Um and I cannot address, maybe Molly or Jenny knows more about the survey process for the master plan um and what, you know, with the specifics of that, so we would need to look into that a little bit more.
Okay, yeah, because and from my point of view, I only remember I was asked about the age, but I I didn't remember any other information was asked. Uh okay, uh Commissioner Kumara Pan?
You're muted.
Uh you are on mute, it looks like.
Sorry, yeah, I I did, I I lowered the hand but forgot Chair mute. Um I think this is an optional, I believe, you're not mandating it, correct, in the survey? Both are optional, they can ignore.
Yes, I think that is an option.
Okay, just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Okay, so uh for these two questions, if no further comments, I I'm wondering, how can we um decide for this to do? Does someone need to make a motion for the first one, the eligibility to take online survey? Uh so the question should be eligible, focus on eligibility or maybe focus on what kind of different ways um collect, um checking the eligibility? How can we, yeah, take the motion, I'm wondering? Oh, Molly, you have some suggestion for this?
Um there's no vote needed, we just need clarification on where you stand as a commission and and how you'd like us to move forward in terms of um how we collect the data. So do you want us to do the registration system? Would you like us to move forward with adding an address to the survey? Um do you wanna make it as easy as possible and not add any of that information? That's kind of what we're we're looking for specifically.
Um, okay, I so Commissioner Kumara Pan, raise your hand.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh okay, that's, yeah, I was thinking that too, no vote needed, but I think you need an input from us so that you can go back and see what constraints or things you have to do it. Um uh again, I just wanted to read it, maybe later we can summarize it, um Chair can help. Um but definitely um putting some kind of a mechanism to track is really important, it need not be, again, whatever way it is, it's IP tracking or it, whatever is feasible, because I don't want this to be dragging down our staff to go on the survey for another two months, three months, no. So you have a strict timeline to go to get it done, but completely opening wild way of doing it is definitely I won't prefer. We should have some mechanism to track so that we are comfortable. Again, collecting addresses, all of them may be so intrusive, so we may not, we don't want to go that path. But at least some level of tracking to be doing. What that level, I think I, as I said, I I let the Engage Cupertino team and Brian, I think, were there, uh they will work on it. But let's not go completely wild open, that's that's an input from I am.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Uh Vice Chair Begor?
I have exactly the same comments. I I don't want to make it more complicated. Uh we want as many people as possible to take the survey, so we don't need their address or anything else that will prevent them from taking the survey. However, there must be simple ways to fight this, uh you know, not let it out in the wild, literally is. Uh Commissioner Kumara Pan said, um we, there are simple little things that we can do, and we should be able to do that technologically uh to prevent this problem. Now, if somebody from the same household has like, you know, four, five, six people, that's fine. I mean, you know, they all obviously use one thing or the other. That's that's, they're all residents and they have a right to give that o- o- opinion, that part is okay. Uh but beyond that, I mean, there must be simple ways to fix this and not just let it be, you know, wildly focused on. No, no complete, no letting a bot just do something for, you know, giving us rubbish data. So we'd like to have some controls, nothing too severe that stops the survey from coming out and or people from taking the survey.
Uh and I kind of agree with this, we should make it easier for people to take the survey, but we can still do some tracking in background uh to check. Yeah, I mean, i- if there's more than ten, then they they take the surveys many times from the same IP, then that's very fishy. But when on the survey, yeah, we we don't need to add extra uh yeah, limitation to, yeah, make it too complicated. And I also wondering for the question, the first question, uh do we need to make any change? Because the first question asked leaving Cupertino, so so thi- this one, should we make it simpler or just keep it this way? You don't have further question? Okay.
Can we put that question up?
Let's see if I can.
I I I I think the Vice Chair Begor had a question on the uh first first question in the survey.
It's in the appendix F, uh draft online survey questions, and you know, it just gives you all the details, I'm assuming, of this.
Yeah, I can uh I can pull up this uh introduction here.
That's the first question.
See, which of the following describes you? First question.
So under the the other, it says, please describe. Is there a free form place for them to describe there?
Uh there there should be, we should be able to offer that.
There should be, so so I guess they would describe it so we could see it. I mean, this is pretty standard stuff that I I don't think we wanna be reinventing the survey process for the city of Cupertino. That that is an uh, you know, that's not practical for, I think, us as a commission to be asking staff to do. So I think they need to work within the systems that have been provided, and they're looking to put this online very quickly. So I think it would be nice to have some of these things, but I think we need to be practical in what staff can actually provide. And, you know, it, we just need to recognize or ask staff to give best, you know, their best shot at doing some of these things. But I don't think we can dictate the systems that are in place. Systems take a lot of work to create, and Cupertino has has put together Engage Cupertino as our process. So I think that first question is fine. I have um I have a number of other comments about the survey that I'd be happy to uh to comment on at some point.
Okay, so um um let let me clarify. So um the two questions raised by staff, we've already finished the discussion on the first one, the eligibility to take online survey. Is is that right? So for the second one, I think we agree that we can add this uh the question about those to collect the data, but that's optional. So the discussion for the second question is.
Chair, I think Commissioner Kumara Pan has a comment.
Okay, yeah, Commissioner Kumara Pan?
Uh thank you, thank you, Chair. So um I understand, I think I just wanna just add on to what Commissioner Stanek said. Understand Engage Cupertino has whatever put in, that's why I made it clear that they should work on it. But at the same time, uh outside threats are in increasing day by day. That means our system has to be up to some extent, sure, right? That's the main reason, so if we are on a stale, on the same infrastructure and nothing touching on it, and then it'll get exploited because outside is moving. That's a, that's a reason I said some measure should be done, not really push it for two months kind of. And so we need to be, given that in the area I'm I'm facing on a daily basis at work and others, outside threats are increasing hourly basis or even not minutes. So we need to be a little more careful on on updating it regularly. I'm sure the staff is doing it, I'm not undermining their capability. But any inputs we can offer to do it, to just to strengthen the data collection is the 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 rational behind it, it's just strengthening it so that we do. That's the only reason I made it. Then I have a comments on the thing, maybe Chair I should wait. Once we discuss the survey type, I I do have some questions, but I'll wait.
Yeah, I so uh I just want to make sure we already reached an agreement on these two uh question raised by staff, and then then we can focus on the survey itself to give comments. Yeah, i- if no objection.
So I I guess I'm curious, I I don't know what we decided on on the demographics. Did we did we agree to have both the age and the ethnicity? Or or one or or none of them? I I would be fine with maybe not the ethnicity and and just putting the age, I think that that is more relevant. Um.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, too.
Yeah, uh coming, coming, actually, coming back to the point with regard to where uh before we talk about the other demographic question, what is the final answer with regard to eligibility? We're just saying, uh our recommendation or our uh to the staff is basically put some some kind of, as to use Co- Commissioner Kumara Pan's words, strengthen the security of the survey. Is that the recommendation? Did I paraphrase anything, Commissioner? Or um do you agree and do we wanna make that recommendation? Let's be clear about that first, and then we will go to the second one, which is the demographic.
Yeah, I'm clear on the first one, as we said, we um we we don't want to wildly open, and we wanna put some way to enforce some of the eligibility or the checks. It's up to what the staff limitations and stuff we have, and if they need any help or guidance, happy to provide. That's where we stopped on it. I don't think that we're anything on the demographic. I I do agree that if we're if we're collecting ethnicity creates a concern in general, I'm fine. But age would be really useful, a very good data point for us to plan for the programs. That's what I would still stand on there.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
And if I could just interject, just um regarding the eligibility, it's, and Brandon can help me out with this. The the my perspective is that uh, you know, Engage Cupertino offers two options. One is to register to take the survey, the other is open ended. Um the other option would be to try to engage either in a different survey platform or to work with the commissioner to try to strengthen uh the tracking on that. So it's kind of three options I see at this point. If the third option would probably delay the release of the of the of the survey.
We don't, we don't know that for sure, right? We don't know that it will release it, we have not, we've just assumed that there isn't a way to do that, and then the the thought process should be, is there a way to simply do it? Yes, no, or if no, why? At least if we have that answer, then we know what we're doing, as opposed to getting a blind survey uh where we have really no idea who do, who answered the survey. So just that third option should be there. Um and if it is not going to fit in the time scale, um going forward, next time we do a survey, we need to make that as a requirement, but that's aside. Uh but right now, we need to get that answer, whether that is possible or not possible.
Yeah, um Lisa, if you don't mind, I can jump in. Um so yeah, so pretty much the the options um currently are no registration, the survey is open to everyone. Two would be um the survey is requires registration, so you have to register, uh have a Engage Cupertino account to be able to take the survey. The third option, um which I don't think we can address, I the cert- uh Engage Cupertino doesn't do like the IP uh tracking that I know of, I would have to look into that. I can't uh, I can't um confirm that it does have that and that we could use any like additional strengthened uh um security measures. However, one thing we could do um would be to have the survey be open. Um ask the the uh the first question, which is I like, uh how do you identify, I live in Cupertino? Um and then potentially do some additional security questions on top of that, like ask about the uh, um we could ask about uh address, age, and gender. Um this way, too, if uh, when we're looking at the data, we could pull up the data and see if there's any like very obvious, someone inputted like five or six entries, um cause that data should be relatively uh varied, um would be the assumption.
Right, right. It does seem as though it's something we need to look into a little bit more. Um we can report back on that.
Yeah, I would say, I think it's, we spent time on it, so it'll be good for the staff to go back and ask the request, if there is third option available or not. If not, it's okay for the timeframe, but what is it we plan to do? That's a request, is that to strengthen or to add additional thing, that's pretty much. I know you know better, so again, we don't know the exact, because it's within the infrastructure on the platform you have. But it'll be good to uh get a response back to us, to the commission. What is it we plan to do? At least that would help. I think maybe I'm looking at Molly or others to track it down and let us know. Brandon, if you're the one going to be responsible on this survey, then it'll be good for us to know what we have in an email update, that would help.
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
So I guess then we can move on to the second part of it, which was the uh demographic question. Sorry, I'm being a stickler about this, but.
Okay, I think we decided, sorry, Chair, I'm just jumping in before I sing, and I think we decided that definitely age would be help, I mean, not decided, we thought that age, okay, ethnicity, we can drop it off. If that helps, is the pain or is the concern? I I would at least go with age.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I see Susan with her hand, if you have anything.
Thank you.
Share.
Um I just wanna ask, clarify, uh the the intention of the commission. Um is the commission saying that we should not move ahead with the survey until we've sorted out the security tools? Or that we can proceed, but we will also check into the security tools? I I think it's a good suggestion, I just wanna see, uh I'm seeking I'm afraid that it would delay the output of the survey for a couple of months if we had to uh rectify, to answer that fully.
I I think what I heard was that we don't even know what it is. So it would be nice to figure out, at least, is there a quick, like a, you know, ask of the IT department? Is there something that you can put to make this a little bit more secure? Yes, no? That answer, if you can come back to the commissioners, then at least we have an idea of what to expect, right? Right now, we're going totally blind.
Okay, so i- in other words, for the purposes of trying to figure out the content of the survey and trying to launch it, um we can, uh the preference that I'm hearing from the commission is that we can proceed with not getting registration. But simultaneously, we would seek to uh better understand and implement uh better security tools uh to the best of our ability. So that is something we can uh find out about and uh follow up to the commissioners about. Okay, thanks.
That that sounds good to me. I think um it's it's really a best efforts thing at this point for this particular survey. And because even if you go find out, we're not gonna have another meeting before the, you're looking to launch this. So we need to be practical about what we're expecting here. And so, I mean, I'm sure we'll hear about that at some future point, but it should not be a gating item for launching the survey.
For sure, it's not a gating, uh for sure, it's not a gating item, but definitely an email out to the commissioner saying, hey, this is what we found out before they put the survey, it's just information, it's uh, it's not too much effort, I don't think.
Agreed. Okay, so uh maybe Chair, I think the second also we answered it now, I believe, people are okay just to go with the age.
Yeah, I I think for the first one, yeah. It's 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 done, and for the second one, we um we already agreed that we can collect those data, but these data are optional. So so for on this this point, we already agreed. But now the question is, what kind of data we are going to collect? So we need. we are going to collect? So we need the input from staff. That that's what am I understanding? Is that right?
Right, Chad, I think that's what we said, the data is, they said two. And then we said, let's pick one, which is the age. We can skip because there is a from a commission, there is a concern on collecting ethnicity. I think the the recommendation is just to collect the age. Done.
Okay, that sounds good to me. So if no.
I agree with that.
I agree with that too.
Good. So if no further comments, we can focus on the survey itself and provide um, comments. And uh, excuse me, so Lisa, could you please share the survey? Now share screen again, so we can provide comments. And Vice Chair Bigor.
Yeah, okay. I have to, I would like to add one more question. Um, I don't, um, I mean, I'm not going to wordsmith the question, but the uh, the information I would like to have is one more question that says, do you play at uh, Deep Cliff uh, only? Do you play at Blackberry Farm only? Do you play at both? And eh, you know, a space to say, you know, any further comment of why you prefer one or the other, or you play at both? I would like that information. I want to know how many people play at both. I think it'll be useful for those that play at Blackberry Farm. We should maybe think of finding some way for Deep Cliff to give them a discount. All that is different, but that information will be useful. Um, so I think we should track
Oops, we cannot hear you.
He lost you.
Yeah.
Oh.
So you in.
Uh, so I repeat the question. I uh, did I? I have no idea when I was lost, so uh.
Uh, you you mentioned you want to add one more question.
Yes, I want to add one more question that asks people, do they play at uh, one uh, one golf course or the other? Why they prefer one or the other, or if they play at both? The details of the, you know, I'm not wordsmithing the the survey question, but I want to get that information.
I think that's a good addition. Does anybody else have comments on that? So so we don't lose it, we can kind of get.
Agree, agree, that's a good one. Agree.
Okay, and Commissioner Kumarpan?
Yeah, well, on the survey, we earlier talked about adding water, um, uh, specific usage and whatnot. And since the the comparison chart we put together today is a public record now. What is stopping us to refer that or mention that people can just refer? I know they may not be able to go to even, we can uh, refer both. If you want to have a complete presentation on all of them, they can click and see that before they answer it. Because these are the data you are providing to the community members, because not everybody is attending it today. So and it is a public record, so we should be able to provide that. And possibly the second is if they need a specific one on it, we can just put the chart alone because they want to know, okay, I'm planning to do, what is it cost and what it is? They will figure it out, what is the water cost, all of them from that itself. So I think that's a summarized view you have on the budget. I think that would be my recommendation. I know there were a lot many questions earlier on that one. Uh, especially your community member also asked about it. So I think that should solve some of those ambiguity, you know, are we exposing specific to that or not? Are we biased kind of? I think that should all go entire is a card, so they can refer to any particular. That's the only input I have on now, um.
Yeah, I ju- I just wanna quickly comment, actually, there is a place there that we can add this chart to, or maybe for make up the reports. If you um, if you can Lisa bring the other page of the survey up.
See.
For the questions, the the, you know, the setup of the whole survey. No, 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 um, just the appendix F, uh, the first page of the appendix F. Or attachment F. The other page of this, yeah.
Okay, um, let me.
You're talking about the intro?
Yeah, I'm talking about the.
Like we're trying to engage everybody.
This here then.
Yeah, yeah. So down there, they say, if you wanna see the details of the reports, it's it's here. You can review the reports for each option and sign up for an email right at the bottom of the page. So there you can actually put that comparison chart, so it makes it easier for people to make that decision of which one they want. It's right there. Uh, so it's just add another link.
Right, so are you saying to include the entire chart, the cost estimate chart, correct?
It is public record, yeah.
Yes, because instead of calling out only the water one, you never know, right? So people may want to have a good picture of it. Otherwise, it is, yes. I do agree, it could be a biased one. We are asking them to take it, but let's support the all those.
So so that means put the detailed form on the webpage on Engage Cupertino site. But it won't take any space on the survey, just people who want to know the details, they they click. And then they they can see the detailed table.
Right.
I think it's, I think it's unrealistic to expect people to click the link. I I don't think people will click the link. So that's why I think having something in the survey helps.
Right, put the image here. Don't give a link for the table. If you're giving a table, we'll we'll provide the table. It's easy for me to make a call rather than I'm not interested in going through entire report. If they wanted, you can give a report, a link. But the table can be easily embedded in that information, because that really gives them
Yeah, I I I was just suggesting that if they wanna make it simple, you can put a link. You don't wanna go through the link with the picture, that's even better.
I think a picture, and you know, I think you still want links to the full reports for those people who have that inclination. Because you're gonna, if you if you have the chart alone, you really, you need to have the caveats of it doesn't include the um, you know, the increase in water costs. It doesn't include the potential grants. And so it's very difficult to convey complex information in a simple survey. But I I think we need a little bit more information here. And one of my biggest concerns about the discussion or the description of the options is option A, golf course, minor repairs and improvements. So when we were talking about this option initially, it was with respect to the other option, which was a full-blown, you know, state-of-the-art golf course. And this was the the minimized version. But when people hear minor improvements, they're not thinking two million dollars. And so I think we have a real semantic problem with continuing to call this minor repairs and improvements, and in other places, minimal uh, repairs. It it's throughout the whole thing, but I really think it gives the wrong impression of what the scope of this project is. Um, I I I think people say minor repairs, good, let's go do it. Without understanding it's two million initially and, you know, ten million over twenty-five years. And so, I mean, we need to somehow convey that something has to be done. Status quo is not an option. So you have to go for one or the other.
Yeah, necessary repairs, kind of something, rather than just putting.
Yeah, necessary, yes, necessary repairs and um, and you know, necessary repairs and safety improvements. You know, these are necessary. And so I think that is, and take out this concept of minor or minimal, because these are not minor and minimal. They are with respect to something that we're not comparing it to anymore. And so I think that that's very important throughout the whole discussion of on the survey and in the report. I mean, that was, that was the direction we gave, and so I don't have any problem with the fact that that's how it was referred to, but I think we're in a different place now. And so I think that that's really important. Um.
Yeah, mm-hmm. And I I agree. Um, I I think the minimum uh, repair was comparing to other repair option in the past. Maybe two thousand fourteen or two thousand sixteen. Yeah, in that version, that's why we call it minimum. And now it's the only option for repair the golf course.
So I guess the first thing we would do is the golf course, uh, option A is necessary repairs for the golf course. Instead of calling it minor repairs and improvements.
I think Susan has her hand out, maybe she'd like to comment on that.
Thank you. Um, thanks for, uh, first of all, I wanna, I wanna, before I forget, before the evening goes on too much, just thank you all so much for actually getting into the details of of the reports and the questions and everything. Um, really appreciate uh, the investment that you've made, so I appreciate, uh, it's an important part, and um, your input so far is great. I'm making notes. Um, I just wanted to note the difficulty of changing names of things. Um, I think that it's actually a very good point, and especially for the survey itself, to get it to rename it so it has a different tone. Um, but I I wanted to just insert a little bit of caution. Uh, we, at this point, it would be very difficult to rename the project and the survey and the study because of the references that come along that are in, it's in the city work program, it's in the CIP. So um, I think it's actually a good, it's good feedback. And to the degree that we can, I think we would implement it, but there's gonna be some limits to it.
Chair, can I make a comment on?
Yeah, uh, so uh, Commissioner Kumarpan have some comment?
Yeah, Susan, I I uh, understand, acknowledge, but this is not going to be a major one. And even even of days, I think we're sending a wrong message, as Commissioner Stanek said, I really wanted to see this changed. I'm not sure what are the other references you just mentioned, but these are all the way in which we present and absolutely will go. So I would like to make sure that this gets really addressed. I wanna call as minor, which may downplay the things on it. So it is out of context, it is being referred, and what Commissioner Stanek brought up is really valid point, and I wanna support that. We need to call that out. And if that needs, I'm not sure what are the changes to be done in that report. The report can say minor on it, but at least on the survey and on my face, I want to say it's a necessary repair. That's how it it has to see it. And even the table, we can modify it. It's it's a report. But the changing from a minor to necessary, I'm not sure what is going to cause a major change in our process. And I, if that's what I'm listening, I'm hearing, I'm sorry, I think we need to make it. And I'm not sure what is under delay.
I I don't disagree with you. Um, I would just, I I think we can take that and run with it. There may be some hiccups and there may be things that I, we can't take it to a hundred percent.
Yeah, the team can come back to us, Susan. I I'm I'm personally, I'm not gonna approve it. If that's not changed, or somebody comes back and say it has one month of effort to change from a minor chief, necessary repair? I will be really, really surprised. And I wanted to see that one, because this is important. And we wanna send the right, because we know it, that's why the comparison, and even I forgot on that particular reference, it's a very important point, so we need to send the right message. And I I'll be surprised if somebody comes back and say it'll take a month. And I want to know why and what.
Okay, we'll note that and try to move on.
Thank you.
Okay, if we go back to the question, right, uh, do you wanna go ahead, Chair?
Oh, so, yeah, my comment is, so this name change is only for the survey when the that that word minimum minor appear. So I don't think it affect all the document, the other place. Yeah, so only in, only in the survey. Yeah, that that's why we we think it's a simple change, yeah. It it doesn't mean we we need to change all the documents referred to the option A and option B. Okay, yeah, Commissioner Stanek, you can continue.
Okay, thanks. If we go um, to back to the next set of questions, right, um, so I think I'm okay with these. Um, again, so when you, when you go down to the last question there, there's assuming costs are similar, choose one, minimal repairs to the existing nine-hole golf course. So that should be necessary repairs to i- in in our terminology that we're going through here. Um, so that's a place. Um, if we go to the next question. Um, so the the second point there is conversion of the golf course to natural habitat with an extension to the Stevens Creek Corridor Trail. It doesn't say anything that there's access for people there. I mean, it does in the initial description of trails, but it doesn't say accessible, natural habitat. And I think that's what we're doing. I I would be concerned that people are saying, oh, we're gonna turn it into a natural habitat that you know, it it, we can't even, there there's no amenities. But I mean, you say it upfront, but not here when you're asking them, what do they prefer? And I think that's important, um, because it is, they're gonna say, what am I getting out of this? And um, and so I think that was one of my ques- my comments. Um, yeah, the access. Uh, the quest- the additional questions that I thought of is um, if, so there's two questions, two parts of it. If the necessary improvements are made to the Blackberry Farm Golf Course, how often would you use it? So this is forward-looking. This isn't how much have you done, but would you use it in the future? What is your, and you know, it's a, it's a guess. And the second half of that is, if it's moved to a natural habitat, how often might you use it or or um, visit? And so, you know, those are guesses, but I think it's future-looking that will give us a sense of um, and and people may not even know if they would or not. But I think that could give us some additional information there. So those are a couple of questions that um, that I would have, so I'd like to hear if the other commissioners think those are useful or not.
Yeah, and and for this, I I agree. I think it's a very good question to add. And maybe we should also let people know it will be a natural habitat, yeah, open to everyone for free. I I I think when um, the the city staff talking about the revenue, they di- they didn't say we are going to um, sell tickets for this, so that should be open to everyone for free. Now, if we can add that information to the new question, that will be great. Thanks. And uh, Vice Chair Bigor, it's your comments.
Yeah, absolutely agree. Um, we need to add those two questions that Commissioner Stanek uh, mentioned, very useful. I also wanna have a little bit more information, not just adding the Deep Cliff question, but um, very similar to the question on Blackberry Farm, I would like a question on Deep Cliff just to get an idea of how many people are using this. And then subsequently, the third one would be, okay, do you use both? Do you use this or do you use that? Um, obviously, whether you wanna build it into one question, um, or you wanna make it three questions, I'll leave that up to um, up to you guys to words with, but I want to know how many people use this Blackberry Farm? How many golf courses, how many people use the Deep Cliff? And um, do they use both? And how often?
Okay, are there any further comments from commissioners?
I have, I have a comment on, not on the specific questions, but on this, the online survey in general. And and that is, we still have a number of people who do not go online. And so I'm wondering if this survey, it's not that hard to have a paper one. Would it be available in paper form at the library or at Quinlan Community Center or other places? Is that something that we have considered? Because only having it available online is a limiting factor in and of itself. So um, that's, that's one of my comments. Yeah, does anybody from uh, staff wanna comment on that?
Um, I, um, it it seems like a reasonable request. I'm not sure what the precedent uh, may have been in the past associated with that, and where are the best places to offer that would be Molly or Brandon? Do you have some ideas?
Okay, we've done some pop-up events and we've had uh, hand-done surveys then. And there's probably that we could leave the surveys at places like Library, Senior Center, Quinlan. You know, we could leave, definitely leave it out with uh, the staff that are there, and they might be able to collect it for us. Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, the other commissioner is good with that? Go ahead, Branton.
I was gonna say, when we typically do a paper survey, um, just as Susan said, and we typically just have one location to turn it in, um, or two, which would be the senior center or, uh, Quinlan.
Yeah, I, I guess I don't see why we couldn't have more than one, but, um, you know, that's, yeah, and the library is another.
Library is, why not? And many times we do it at the library, it's a common place people come and to.
And have collection boxes there as well. And, um, the other comment I have, which is, um, I feel pretty strongly about is, so you, you described a virtual community meeting on June sixth. One of my thoughts, and we talked about this in the last meeting about the options, was that the only people who know what it's like inside the golf course are golfers. And so I'm wondering if we could have one or two open houses at Blackberry Farm Golf Course, where we invite residents to come to walk the golf course. And so that would require shutting it down for an afternoon, uh, you know, a weekday, and a weekend, and then we invite people to come out and see it, because, yeah, you can see it sort of when you're walking along the corridor, but people who don't live right next to the corridor, or maybe not strolling through there all the time. And so I would like to get residents from all over the city to be able to walk through there and make a judgment about it. And that would, I, I mean, I think we have time, because the survey is going to be up, you know, through all of June and into July. So I would really like to see us be able to hold an open house where we could invite the public to wear their tennis shoes, so that they are not, um, you know, doing, damaging the turf in any way, but that they could actually walk it and see what, what it is.
I totally agree on that.
Commissioners comment?
Absolutely agree on it.
Yes, that's a good idea.
Yes, yes.
What does staff think of that? Do you think that's a, something that we could figure out how to do?
I'll let Molly answer that question, because some of the logistics are, might be a little tricky, but I don't see any very obvious barriers.
It's definitely something that we are happy to look into.
Yeah, I think it's a big one. Thank you, I appreciate that. I think those are my biggest concerns and comments.
Okay, I see Commissioner Kumarapan have comments.
Yeah, a quick question, so will we have an opportunity to see the final one before go live with all these changes, at least on email? All these survey questions, all these suggestions, and I know that we're not meeting, but I just would like to make sure that we have an opportunity to see it in an email.
I don't think that should be a problem unless someone else sees otherwise.
Um, I would actually interject that we're going to take your feedback, and we're going to make tweaks to the questions, and I think that the timeline dictates that we really do need to move forward with this. But we can share with you what we come up with, I don't know when that's going to be done, but we can definitely share with you.
I'm just asking to share, I'm not asking further review, but I would like to see that one. So many comments are given, and I just wanted to see that, and you don't have to wait for approval from it, but it would be good to share it before it goes live, and if it was something completely dramatic, of course, we'll come back. It'll be good to see all these inputs, or, I know you'll be incorporating it, but it would be good to share it with the commission. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for all the comments. Are there any further question or, okay? So it looks like we finished this agenda item, and thank you all for your hard work. Thank you for the staff for preparing all the materials and answer our questions.
Uh, thank you, Chair.
Okay, so now here's a agenda item two, the monthly update report.
Yes, thank you. So I'm going to give a really quick, um, director's update, I only have three items to cover. The first is an update from City Council. Council will be considering extending the resolution authorizing the continued remote teleconference meeting of the legislative bodies for the period of May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, through June eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, pursuant to the Brown Act at tomorrow night's meeting. So for now, the next Parks and Recreation meetings will be virtual until further notice. In terms of a department update from the Parks and Recreation Department, the poet laureate recruitment is live and accepting applications online or at the Quinlan Community Center, and the recruitment is scheduled to close on June first at five P M. And finally, just a couple meeting updates. The community, the, as we mentioned, the community meeting that's planned for Monday, June sixth, to discuss the Blackberry Farm Golf Course. And there's going to be a special joint meeting with the Parks and Recreation Planning and Bike and Ped planned for Monday, June thirteenth, to discuss the Lawrence Midi Park. And that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for your update. Are there any, um, update from commissioners? Uh, Commissioner Stanek?
Fine, yeah, um, you know, this part of the, the commission meeting used to be, everybody on the commission would, would offer the, um, their comments on community events that they've attended. And I think it used to be very useful, and I think we've gotten away from that a little bit. So I'm going to go ahead and describe the community events that I attended in the last month, and I hope that, um, we will see more of, of these kinds of reports from everyone, in addition to the, the mayor's meeting update. So, um, I attended the library expansion, and I know the vice chair was also there, and, and it was a beautiful, um, wonderful event, and I hope that everyone can get out there to see the library expansion, and it's a very great amenity in the city. The Cherry Blossom Festival was also very well attended and very well organized, and I hope that a lot of people could, um, were able to go out and see that. I also took a visit over to the Creekside Labyrinth, just to see how it's doing. There have been times when it gets a little bit messy, and either I've cleaned it up and straightened it out, or, or we have a Cupertino Ferry Godmother who has straightened it out, I don't know who that might be, but I've come sometimes when I saw it was messy and went back to fix it, and it's been all completely fixed. This time when I went, I have to report that the labyrinth is completely gone. It is not messed up, it is not, um, it, it, so, it's just gone. And I followed up with, uh, the director to ask her if Public Works had contacted her about removing it, and, um, the response from Public Works was that, you know, they did not give anyone direction to do that, and they thought it was vandalism. Now, it's completely gone, there is not a stone left, and there were hundreds of stones. So I think we haven't quite gotten to the bottom of what happened to the Creekside Labyrinth, but what it points to is the need for, um, the city to support these labyrinths that we already have with some signage and some maintenance and some clear direction. And, um, I'm hoping to work with the, um, our new Director of Public Works to, to talk about the existing one at McQuillan, that's still there, it had some weeds growing up through it, and then also our additional, as we go and look at additional parks, that will be coming to us, and we'll be able to say, well, in this park renovation, we'd like to see a labyrinth. So that will be, as part of sort of ongoing park review, and who knows, maybe, um, as part of the, uh, if we go to natural habitat at Blackberry Farm, we could have a labyrinth in there, who knows what we, you know, or where it would be, or at Memorial Park, I know people are thinking of it there. So I did want to update you that unfortunately, the labyrinth on the east side that Sashi and I worked very hard to put together is not there anymore. The council is, uh, has been working on the work plan, and the, um, the Off Leash Dogs has been ranked very highly, the group that has been, um, that has come to our meetings so many times, has continued to very professionally and courteously work and let council know what their priority is, and it is basically tied with a couple other items for a number one priority on the work plan this year. So considering where that was last year at number fifty-three, and basically staff said, we know it's on the work plan, but it's so low in priority that we don't have time for it, um, things have definitely changed, and, uh, the work plan is going to be reviewed, I guess it was reviewed last night at the, at the council meeting. So I think they're done with that for now, but I believe tomorrow night on the agenda again is community grants, and I, hopefully they'll get to it, it's a continued meeting, and there's a lot of things on that meeting as well, maybe Molly has an idea if they're going to get to the community grant tomorrow. I think it's on the agenda, is that right, Molly?
Sorry, I think so. If anybody else knows for sure, you can pipe up.
Okay. It, it was, it was one of the items that's continued to the agenda tomorrow, but again, if they get to it, it, you know, it was number thirty-five last night out of forty items, so it was pretty clear they weren't going to get to it. And, oh, the last thing is that I did go over to Sunnyvale, because they had a, a grand opening of their Fair Oaks Park, where they have renovated the entire park. They have new beautiful turf fields for baseball and soccer. They also have a skateboard park there, which I thought was very interesting. They also opened up their inclusive playground there, so I recommend if anybody is interested in, in getting more ideas about what inclusive playgrounds look like, um, since we're going to be having one at Jollyman. And again, the Sunnyvale one was, um, was given to Magical Bridge to, to manage, which we're not doing in Cupertino, but Magical Bridge does have all the experience doing that in, in most of Santa Clara Valley. So, um, if you, I, I definitely highly recommend, if you have not been to an inclusive playground, that you go over to Fair Oaks to see it, and, and it's really remarkable, um, very nicely done. They also have a, um, a dog park, a fenced-in dog park area there, and I have to say that that is the one big disappointment in that park. It is sort of your standard dirt, um, fairly small fenced-in dirt, uh, dog park, which I know that our residents have said, we don't, they don't want that, that's why they're looking for the Dolas off-leash areas, and so, um, but if you go to Fair Oaks, you can see a lot of everything over there, and so I highly recommend doing that. And that's all for my commission report.
Thank you for your updates, a lot of interesting information, and thanks. And Commissioner Kumarapan have any update to share?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, I forgot, I attended the mayor's meeting, and the only thing is that I was attending from New York in the late night, so there's audio issues, so I couldn't completely, so I was just doing a sign, thanks to understand audio, but I did cover one portion, which I would like to tou, touch on, which is on the, uh, the tech commission, Raj, he was presenting it, which is very, uh, important ones. Currently, there are pilots going on, on the adaptive signal, uh, with, and intelligent cameras in, uh, you know, in critical junctions to make sure the traffics are regulated, this is on the, to, to cater to the safety needs. And also, there is one pilot, he, they talked about, which I don't know much about it, is the Li-High Noise Plus Environmental Pollution Deduction. So it looks like there is a pilot, um, currently monitoring is in progress. So those are the two updates from them. And there are new proposals for twenty twenty-three, is that license plate recognition, they call LPR, that's a one, uh, in the proposal, um, uh, in the plan. And then also, like typically they do every time, every year, the cybersecurity outreach, which they are going to plan, given that it is still increasing, so they wanted to. And the third one is, uh, chatbot help to answer the questions, um, for the operational side kind of in the website, looks like there will be a chatbot, which you can answer the questions automatically if the community member have any questions, to interact with it, just so that they can provide. So those are the key things, they, they touched on it. The others, I noticed a little bit, and I'm reaching out to those commissioners to get a little more information, and then once it is there, I will send it to the staff to be included in the next, possibly in the minutes. So I'll get back to Kevin and Jessica on that. That's pretty much my end, Chair.
Thank you. And, uh, I have some, uh, updates, but maybe, um, commissioners already got email from, uh, from our Vice Mayor Liang Chao, she sent email talking about the, uh, hybrid meeting. So as she said, uh, our council meeting, they are allowed, uh, not only the, uh, audience can go online, but sometimes when there's some council member is maybe on business trip, they can log, uh, login online and join the, uh, council meeting in future. So that means the hybrid is not only for audience, but also for people on the, yeah. And she said, if commissioners have interest in, have, have interest in this option, maybe we, we can discuss with staff, uh, talking about maybe in the future, uh, some, uh, commissioner on business trip, but we already go back in person, but that one, you can set up their computer and join the meeting and join the vote, yeah. So just want to share this information. Okay, so is there anyone want to share some news, some interesting information? If no, okay. Now it's nine, uh, forty-seven, and I call this Park and Rec Meeting to end, and thank you everyone for attending and provide a lot of useful information.